Let me pounce that a little harder. Everybody there? All right, good evening. Workshop Council meeting for City of Copper's Cove held October 21st, 2025 is called for order at 5:02 PM. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancy.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona. John Hale.
Here.
Dale Treadway.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right, a quorum is present, so we move to item C, announcements.
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
None at this time.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. The first one is, it's, uh, early voting is open. Now, while Copper's Cove does not have a particular item on the ballot, our residents and voters should go vote, so please go vote. Also, this past Saturday, just want to say a huge thank you to KCCB and Anna Rodriguez, who put on a phenomenal eco-harvest event out at Ogletree Gap, so well done. And then this Saturday is at 4:00 PM at City Park. The Parks and Recreation Department is hosting the following festival. Please be cautious when you're in the area of City Park. For this event, there are a lot of people who attend, and so there will be a lot of traffic and a lot of children out there. Thank you.
All right. I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Yes, sir. The Friends of Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery welcomes everyone to participate in either the re preparation, which is Saturday, November 22nd at 10:00 AM, re- laying ceremony, Saturday, November 29th at 10:00 AM, and the re- retrieval, Saturday, excuse me, January 10th at 10:00 AM. For more information, you can go ahead and visit www.reethesforvets.org. Thank you.
No announcements. All right. Uh, let's see, there's no public recognition for this meeting, so we move to item E, workshop items.
E1, review and discussion of the 2025 City of Copper's Cove Citizen Engagement and Priority Assessment. Ryan Haberlaw, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, just to let you know, we're going to review the citizen survey, but I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who really is a point person from staff that coordinates with our consultant on this, so Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, and City Council. So as Ryan discussed, we're going to talk about the results of the City Citizen Engagement Priority Assessment. So we have Will Saintemore. He's the Executive Director with Cobalt Community Research on a Zoom call, so we're going to see if we can hear Will.
Good evening.
Loud and clear. Do that one more time, Will.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you.
That's perfect, okay, Will. All right, so we have Will with us. We've worked with Will for, gosh, probably 15 years on different surveys. So the way we're going to do this is I'm going to pull the PowerPoint presentation up on the screen here, and I'm going to just zoom through the slides as Will gives the presentation and background and results of the survey. So Will, if you would just kind of hit next slide whenever you're ready for me to go to the next one.
And Mayor and Council, as we're going through this, by all means, just speak up if you have questions in those particular areas, those slides. We have plenty of time to go through this, so just make, don't wait on your questions.
Okay, Will, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, sounds great. So everyone can see the presentation up on the screen?
Yes, sir.
All right, wonderful. Well, good evening again, everyone. I will go through the report, and if you have questions, like I said, go ahead and ask away. So slide two is just some information on Cobalt Community Research. We're a nonprofit. We work around the country mainly with small and medium-sized communities doing the kind of work that you're looking at now. Next slide is why research matters. A number of really good reasons to do so. I'm not going to read them all, but really, the bottom line at the bottom is it is something that builds trust. It helps you ensure that you're in tune with what the community overall is interested in, what their priorities are, what their perceptions are, because sometimes you might hear from a few folks that are particularly brave, or particularly eloquent, or particularly passionate, but it's helpful to have this kind of data just to put all of that in perspective and make sure that you've got this one additional piece as you're making the decisions that you're making. Next slide, please. So this is the bottom line. The first two slides are just getting to the chase. So when we look at your scores, last time we ran this was back in 2021, and your scores have gone up since then, generally, usually within the margin of error. There was a little bit of softening here and there, and we'll go over that as we go through the presentation. But in 2021, your ACSI score was a 48. That rose three points in 2025 to a 51. And I do want to mention that these are not, uh, these are not grades, so it's not a grading scale. This is more of a, it's just a numeric scale from zero to 100. Texas overall, for similarly sized communities, scored a 64, and it went up to a 66 in 2025. So you guys gained a little bit on the benchmarks as well. So there are a series of questions that have more leverage, more impact on your overall satisfaction, and the outcome metrics that are tied to it. And the model that we use, the outcome metrics are things like people remaining in the community, recommending it to others, encouraging businesses to start up in the community, volunteering, those types of things. So the better job you do in these areas, the more likely people are to do those kind of outcome metrics. So in 2025, you can see the top five listed there, city government, management, taxes, economic health, image, parks and rec, compared to the 2021 drivers. One of the things that we saw as we dove into the data is that your economic health scores, in particular, have had a pretty significant impact. So just as the economy does its usual ups and downs, that is something that had a pretty significant impact on your scores. When we look at your parks and recreational services, Hills Cove and Library, we did see an uptick in use, which is great. We also saw an uptick in those scores as well. Police services, fire, street, and parks are the things that folks identified as the most important. This is pretty consistent with what we see with other communities. When we looked at some of the specific projects that you've got going on, improved maintenance and appearance of properties downtown and on Business 190, infrastructure to balance travel by modality, enhanced work with developers to meet city goals, all of those had a lot of support. A majority also support upgrades to city parks and downtown improvements, and also a majority are willing to provide some level of new funding to do so, which is, which is good. I've been working with some communities lately where they want improvements, but they're not willing to pay for them. So a little bit different in this situation. A plurality of folks wanted to see some additional Christmas decorations, some sidewalk improvements and some biking and walking trails. I say plurality because it wasn't a majority of folks, but those are the things we gave them a basically a wish list. These are the things that popped up the most. There's a number of questions where we had open-ended comments, and when we look at the themes, some of the things that come out is that residents would like to see more activities. They really want to stay in Copper's Cove more often, and they feel like they need to go outside of the city to do some of these activities, to get some services in various kinds of stores. They really do want to strengthen the local economy, and they want to keep their dollars in the Cove as much as possible. When asked about growth drivers, why are people moving into the city? They talked about housing affordability, the availability of houses, military connection, and just a general perception that it is quieter and safer. So you've got a bunch of tools. This is a summer report. There's a lot more data that you've got available. One of them is that you've got detailed questions broken down by demographic groups and basically thermal mapped, and I'll talk about that in a second, but that's probably the most important thing, is you start digesting the information in the survey. You've got the comparison scores for Texas, the South, and across the nation to give you some context in terms of how you're doing. And then there's also a number of local government, or non-local government scores that are available through the American Customer Satisfaction Index, the ACSI. So if you wanted to look at various industries, or agencies, or specific companies, that is something that you can do as well. So next slide, we should be on methodology. So we distributed the surveys to a random sample of 2,000 voters, and that was over the summertime. We did it in two waves. An initial wave went out, and then a second wave went out to those who hadn't responded. There's also an opportunity for folks who weren't part of the sample to respond as well. And this is a little bit different than what we've done in prior years because we've gone off the utility bills in the past. So this is something that's a little bit more representative. We actually saw in the results that you have a bit more participation by some of the groups that were a bit underweighted in the past. All of the mailed surveys had postage paid envelopes for people to respond. People could respond either using that envelope, or they could hop online using a unique ID number that we use to make sure that people don't respond multiple times and manage their reminders. We had a valid response from 576 residents in '21. That response was 538, so that's a nice jump in terms of the kind of response that we're seeing. When we looked at the random sample, we have a margin of error of about plus or minus 5%. And then we also had the non-sample responses that were put in. We didn't commingle those in the score, so as we go through the charts, you're just going to see the charts based on the random sample, because mathematically, those are the folks that we can say are within the margin of error. All of the folks who are not part of the sample, there is a line in the cross tabs that allows you to see how they responded as well. Typically, it's right in line with the rest of the folks, but there are some variations because people can self-select whether they participated or not. And sometimes there's interest in library groups or park groups to get the word out and to get people responding to a survey. So this is a way of balancing that a bit. One of the questions that always comes up is for a national survey, or for a certain community our size, did we have enough responses? And to do a full national survey, to get plus or minus 5%, you need about 384 responses to reflect all 330 million of us. So you're in really good shape from a data standpoint. Next slide, looking into the detail. This is a tiny little slice of the cross tabs. If you've looked at these in the past, you know that they are vast and they cover lots of different areas. But I wanted to talk about what are the components of this? And one is that every question in the survey has its own column. So you can see utilities and drinking water and trash collection and all that marching across the top. Then on the columns on the far left-hand side, you can see your historic scores, and then we drop down into each of the individual demographic groupings. So by area, north, south, central, west, by residence, how long people have lived in the community, and there's a bunch of others as well that are available to you. If you see that things are pretty consistently blue or red, that means regardless of score, people tended to have the same experience, they have the same priorities, they were acting in a pretty consistent way when it came to responding to the survey. When you see check rings, so a mix of the blue and the red, that means that there were some differences in the demographic groups. We put a little asterisk by some of them, so if you see one year or fewer, there's a little asterisk there. That means that there were fewer than 30 people in that group, and sometimes you get a bit more volatility in terms of how people responded. So we do like to flag that, yet sometimes you do get some outliers there. But generally, this is a good tool to understand, you know, how's the community feeling? And when you're out there in the Milk Isle and somebody is talking to you about various things going on within the city, if you know they're from a group that might have responded low on a particular question, instead of just asking generally, you know, how are things going and what can be improved? You can really zero in specifically on folks like them and say, okay, you know, people like you marked playgrounds lower than others. What are some specific improvements we can make in that area? So it's a great tool for council when you're out in the community to really have much more focused, surgical kind of questions to follow up and have those kind of conversations. All right, let's drop down to slide 10, which is comparing 2021 to 2025. If you go all the way over to the right-hand side, you can see the change, 21 to 25, and you can see how those scores shifted. There's a little bit of rounding between the column for 2021 and 2025, so if it looks a little bit off, it is because of the rounding. But you can see generally how those have moved. For the most part, it's the yellow arrow because they were within the margin of error. If it is something that's highlighted in green, that means it's one of the five areas that we identified that were the most strongly connected to overall satisfaction. So those are the things that have the most bang for the buck of moving your score up or down. And for the most part, those have gone up. The only exception there is the economy, which you can see that one red arrow pointing downward. So it did have a significant effect on your scores. Next slide, your community ACSI. So this is your overall American Customer Satisfaction Index score, so overall satisfaction. And you can see your scores, current scores, in dark blue. 21 is in the lighter blue, and then you can see the Texas scores in red, the Southern scores in kind of the orangish, beigeish color, and then the US scores in green. The lighter colors for all of those are representing the communities that have 25,000 to 100,000 people in them. More of the direct comparisons to you. So when we look at community satisfaction and comparison with the ideal, you can see that you're a bit below the benchmarks, but you are gaining ground on them as well. Next slide. These are the outcome behaviors that I talked about. So recommending the city, remaining, living in the city five years from now, so on. You can see that your scores did drift down a smidge. You're a little bit below the benchmarks, but I think as you continue on the road that you're on, you're going to see some steady gains. All right, next slide is just explaining how to read the bubble charts. And for those of you who have been through Cobalt Things before, you know we use a lot of them. Let's go to the next slide. And what this is doing on the vertical is it's showing how folks rated different dimensions of the community on a scale of 0 to 100. You can see that scale on the left-hand side is actually 0 to 80. We zoomed in just so you can see the difference in the points a little bit more readily. Across the horizontal is the relationship to overall satisfaction of those outcome metrics. So the further to the right things are, the stronger that relationship. And this is comparing movement from 2021 to 2025. So the N that has the number in it, the label, that's your 2025 score. So if we look in the bottom right quadrant, we can see 26. And 26 is city management overall. You can see that's a pretty strong driver, and it's gone up in terms of your performance. When you see 19 just above it, that's taxes, so that one has also improved. 44, parks and recreation, that moved up quite a bit, and it also became much more of a driver. And 35, just below that, 35 is the economy overall, and you can see that one is also a driver. It's over on the right-hand side, and that's the one that really dropped. Things that are over on the left-hand side, you can see 12, which is utilities, and 58, which is public safety overall. Those are in that quadrant, not because they're unimportant, they're actually very important to folks, but they are kind of optimized from the perspective of driving satisfaction of those outcome behaviors. So they're in a good place, and from a satisfaction standpoint, they don't necessarily need to be improved. Down in the bottom left quadrant, you can see that orange line, transportation overall, and you can see that one slid down, and it's also moving over to the right pretty quickly. So that's one to keep an eye on, and we'll go into that one in a little bit more detail here in a few minutes. Next slide is image overall. So this is a community brand, and you can see that you're below the benchmarks, but in many cases, you're bumping up a bit or staying pretty much level from a statistical standpoint. So if we're looking at scores that are the highest, we see things like a safe place to live. That scored really well. Enjoyable place for senior citizens, that one also scored really well. If we're looking at the areas that are the softest, we can see physically attractive and great curb appeal. That's one that dropped, although it did go up a little bit compared to 2021. And you can see the enjoyable place for people to visit and enjoyable place for young adults are also scores that are a bit softer than the others. Dropping down to the next page, looking at the scatter chart for those, you can see that these are pretty impactful. Most of them cross that center line over into the right quadrant. 56 being the one with the most impact, and 56 is growing responsibly. And so there's some open-ended questions that can shed some light on that. Next slide, transportation overall. So you can see the overall score dipped a bit over on the left-hand side. Road maintenance scores improved. Traffic congestion, really about the same. Public transportation weight down a little bit. Accommodation for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, that one went up a little bit. When we look at the next slide, transportation infrastructure, we can see that for the most part, these are over on the left-hand side, so not as strong with driver. Number two, though, is road maintenance. And while that's been improving, it is a stronger driver. So that's something that is, as far as transportation elements to improve, that's the one that has the most bang for the buck. Next slide, looking at utilities. Overall, pretty similar to what we saw on 22. Drinking water quality, we see a pretty significant drop there. The other scores are pretty much the same as they were back in 2021. It's trash collection, brush and bulk disposal, recycling collection, billing and collecting, billing and collecting, and special collection events, pretty much the same as they were last time. Now, the last two, billing and collecting and the special collections, those are marked, you don't see the benchmarks because they're not part of our regular annual benchmarking process, so these are custom questions to you. Next slide. Popping those onto the cross tab, you can see all of these are to the left of that center line. 18 being the one that's moved the most, and that's your special collection events. Sorry, that's not 18, that's 13, that's your drinking water. Next slide, taxes. Here, you're above the benchmarks. We saw this in the comments as well, that you're a more affordable community to live in. The housing's more affordable, the cost of living generally is more affordable than other communities in your region, and you're continuing to improve that area. Next slide, local management. You can see those scores below the benchmarks, but for the most part, they're inching up. So particularly strong when we're looking at having a website that meets needs, providing opportunities for for the residents to participate in city decisions, also marked high. We can see the communicating effectively with the community, that's marked higher. Areas that are marked a bit lower, spending dollars wisely is the one that came up. And we see this with every community that we work with, and often that's a real challenge because from a communication standpoint, you don't talk about it too much in terms of the nuts and bolts of how you address making those kind of decisions of where the dollars go. And when you do address them, residents' eyes glaze over. So it's not something that they're super interested in, but they say, hey, it's government, and government always spends money poorly, so they always mark you down. But that is a challenge from a perception standpoint that you'll want to spend a little bit of time looking at. Next slide is giving you the impact of those city management scores. You can see all of them are over on the right-hand side. So these all do matter. These all have a lot of impact, so these are things that you'll want to continue to look at. Particularly way down at the bottom, you can see 30, spending dollars wisely. And as I mentioned, that's often a communications challenge to bring that score up. Next slide, looking at the economy. You can see that those scores have pretty much dropped in most of the areas, with the exception of the availability of housing, which has gone up. But quality of jobs, availability of jobs, those are your two low-scoring areas, and those are ones that have dipped down compared to 2021. Next slide, looking at the economy. You can see, again, all of those, almost all of those are sliding down into the right. So that accounts for a lot of the reason that your score didn't go up more than it should have. Next slide, parks and rec. You can see those across the board have gone up pretty even as far as what the scores are for each of those areas. And if we go to the next slide, looking at the bubble chart, you can see all of those slopes are going up into the right. And this means that your parks and rec are actually becoming one of the jewels in your community. These are things that are drawing people in, these are having a positive impact on overall satisfaction, and essentially do that more because this is a particular area that matters to your residents, and it's going to have some payoffs for you. Next slide is public safety. Pretty much the same as what we saw in 2021. A little bit of softening in a couple of areas as far as crime control and the ambulance, and animal control. We saw code compliance pop up a little bit compared to 2021. Next slide is looking at the scatter on those, and most of them are off to the right with the exception of 63, and 63 is municipal court. So that's something that is more impactful and has dipped down since 2021. The next slide is looking at some open-ended questions. And when we ask these questions, what we do is the words that come up most often are the words that are the largest, and then we take a look at what are the themes around those words. So when we look at this, you know, basically, we're trying to find out what else people wanted to share with the city, things that... So when we look at this, you know, basically, we're we're trying to find out what else people wanted to share with the city, things that that you guys needed to know. At first is around the area of quality of life in community spaces. So as I'd mentioned in the introduction, people want more reasons to stay in town. They want more trails, live music, events, all of these kind of things. Feel that Cope doesn't have have as much as some of the other communities in the area. But people really do want to stay in town and spend time doing those kind of things. Next, as we look at infrastructure, safety and services. So there are a number of comments about roads and sidewalks. Water quality, all of those are areas that came out as frustrations fairly often as you go through the comments. Road construction was a concern as it means you've got a lot of orange barrels and closures and all that kind of thing. There's also some concern about animal control code enforcement. Park programs had had some mixed comments, so there's some opportunities there to find improvements, but there's also some recognition of the things that you're doing better. And entertainment beyond fast food and donut chops again. Next slide. We asked them, what are the most important services and programs that the city offers? And the ones that came up to the top are the ones that we see often with communities. So you have the the police services, fire EMS, street maintenance, and the city parks and recreation. Those are really your big four. If we wanted to go to number five, public library and street lighting are really the ones that that round that out. Next slide. One of the things that we often ask, particularly as the economy starts to get a little bit more iffy, is if there are not enough funds to maintain service levels, what kind of budgetary actions do you support? And we give options like eliminating the services, reducing service levels, raising fees and taxes, outsourcing. And really, there wasn't one that really jumped out. All of these are, you know, ten to twenty percent in terms of the folks responding. Overall, you know, the majority of folks or the near majority of folks aren't sure what to do with it. So that means essentially that there's a lot of openness there. They're looking to the city council to provide some information and provide some guidance in terms of what is the best path forward if there aren't enough funds available to cover the things that you're doing today. Next slide. We asked about increasing planning efforts and would they like to see more effort in those areas or not as much effort in those areas? So if we look at enhanced work with developers, fifty-four percent of folks said yes, that's definitely something that that they would like to see you do more of. Particularly, you just think about the growth and, you know, the things that you're experiencing, some of the growing pains. The implemented transportation utility fee for street maintenance. Twenty-three percent said yes, forty percent said no, and thirty-six percent really wanted more information because they didn't know which way to go on that one. Improve appearance and maintenance of properties downtown, and then one ninety, a resounding yes. So sixty-eight percent said yes, very few people said no, and a few folks wanting more information. And similarly, infrastructure to balance travel by vehicle, foot, wheelchair and bicycle. That's also something that received a very strong response, that people want to see more of that. Next slide. We're asking about the growth, and we're really wanting to understand what are the reasons that people are choosing to move to Copper's Cove? And the big things that came out, first of all, affordability of housing. So lower home prices, taxes are lower, there's property that's available, nice housing that people can move into. Second thing is military, no surprise there, you've got a lot of folks that are being relocated or they're retiring, and so they they are coming to Copper's Cove for those reasons. And then the last reason is really the the city character. So people feel safe, they like the small town feel of it, they like that that the Cove is quieter and just, you know, good schools, good amenities, there's a lot of things that they like. So even though your scores are a bit lower compared to the benchmarks, the folks that are do live in town, while they certainly have plenty of plenty of things that they talk about improving, they do like the city, and there's a number of of nice things that they say. And if you're feeling beat down, you know, going through the open ended questions, number twenty is something that'll really help you see kind of the other side of the coin than you get sometimes when you're just asking what you can do better. Next slide is looking at potential future projects. We had a few things listed here. The ones that really jumped out was support upgrades to all city parks, so walking trails, athletic fields and so on. So that was almost eighty percent of folks wanted to see that going into the future. Support downtown improvements also very strong, that's a seventy percent. So those are really your two huge things. Everything else is really secondary compared to that. Next slide. We're asking about amenities in general, just to to add or enhance their experience in the city. The things that that popped up, Christmas decorations, interestingly, popped up quite a bit. But also sidewalk repairs and walking trails, those were also up in the the low thirties. And also the railroad underpass to improve traffic flow also was something that came up as being pretty strong. Next slide. Amount to pay per month, one of the questions that we ask is, you know, based based on your options, would you be willing to pay a little bit more? And how much would you be willing to pay to implement these kind of improvements? And often we see people saying, no, I don't want to pay anything. But in your case, we had about fifty-two percent saying that they would be willing to pay five, ten or fifteen dollars per month to see some of these improvements take root. And we only had about thirty-nine percent of folks saying no. So again, so some nice direction there that people are willing to invest in their community. Next slide, asking how people want to receive information from the city. Mail and email were really the top two. And then the last slide is just talking about how to improve the scores going forward. This is something that our staff has has worked on. The first step, the measurement step, you've completed that. The second step is to really take some time and for the council, for leadership, to think about why did people respond that way they did? What are the what are the handful of things that we'd like to move the needle on? And what are the specific things that we can do to improve those scores going into the future? Step three is broadening the conversations, taking those ideas and going out to a staff, going out to the community, having some workshops and say, okay, here's here's some of the things that we're trying to improve, here are some of the ideas that we came up with. What's missing? And what are the things that would really have the most impact on you? And that starts to give you your your marching orders, a much clearer sense of the things to focus on. Fourth step, looking at who are the people that are actually going to implement these changes, make sure they have the tools and the training to do it. Step five, that's really project management. So what are the deliverables, what's the timeline, how are you going to measure progress so that the the momentum is is both seen and continued? Okay, so that is the summary presentation. Like I said, you've got a a lot more information that you can go through. But at this point, I'll stop talking and give you an opportunity to ask questions that you've got.
Counsel. Comments?
Yes, Mayor, I got to ask a comment and a question. The first thing, I understand the numbers going up and down, but on transportation, is there any reason why the numbers went down? Because I know hop increased a lot of the ride shares this past year.
Mayor. Kevin and I talked about this, we we kind of talked through it with Will as well. We do feel that one of the main drivers for that is a lack of awareness and education, even knowing what the hop is doing. But here's the other thing is, we don't have the larger green buses driving around town anymore. So they're not visible. What is visible, and only if you pay attention, are the commercial indistinct white buses that have the hop written on it relatively small compared to the vehicle. And so I I think a lot of people think we don't have public transportation anymore. And with the effort that the hop is doing to rebrand, and their vehicles will be highly visible as they're going down the road, I think at least that impression will change.
Okay, thank you.
You also have to understand that some of that transition with with the hop was taking place right when they were doing this survey. So there was, you know, you didn't have a clear cut one way or the other because of the transition that was going on. Anybody else? Okay.
Do you have a closing comment?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I have several closing comments, actually. First, I just want to say thank you to Will. He has been a very helpful resource to our community. A number of things in our community have changed based on your policy directions, Counsel. Just looking at where some of the changes have greatly changed, you know, we've seen Parks and Recreation with a relatively significant improvement from one survey to another. And that is because you as counsel have made policy decisions in the past or the past several years to begin really improving our parks. And we've seen that, we've we've got coverings over playgrounds, we've we've got a more functional basketball court out at City Park. We've done new lights out at the ball fields, the duck pond looks so much better. We we have a hashtag Cove sign out there. I mean, there there have been a lot of things that have changed with Parks Rec. And the survey is indicating that your policy investments in that area are paying off, thank you, Mayor, are are paying off. But it also is is a great illustration that whatever you as the council decide to focus on with this next survey that is now complete, as long as you have a strong focus in those areas, we will see improvements and changes as long as those decisions that you make are efficient and well-publicized and noted and shared with the community that we're going down this effort to be responsive. The one of the comments at the front, and Kevin, can we go to slide five? Well, one of the comments up front is, and it was not on slide five, but it was in that that word chart, is more places to stay. There are more reasons to stay in Copper's Cove. And this this slide right here of slide five really kind of talks about a number of those things. The second from the bottom addresses the strengthening of the local economy. And I I think that's something that as we continue to move forward with a strategic plan, just as a reminder, the EDC has already completed a strategic plan. It is very detailed and it's very specific on the task that they will be focusing on over the next several years. So that is something that I, in my opinion, counsel should also continue to focus on, especially in your dialogue with board members at the EDC and our executive director at the Economic Development Corporation as well. But this this slide also indicates that there's there's interest in a number and responses in a number of areas that you as the council have already heard and paid attention to, and you're moving forward with. So if if we just start start at the bottom, you know, police services and EMS, fire EMS. One of the things that you have done over the last year plus is you considered market adjustments, compensation adjustments for those departments. You took the action and then actually put it on the ballot last year, and our voters approved that. So again, indicating that not only is counsel aware of what their priorities are, but our our voters actually showed with their votes what their priorities are as well. Street maintenance, understandably, that over the last month or so, we've had some very frequented town halls regarding our street maintenance utility, you'll be taking action on that tonight. Again, it's a priority for the community. Finding the right way to address that is what counsel has been working on again. Parks and Recreation, we already talked about. Properties in the downtown and business one ninety, that's that's one of the areas that even you as counsel have talked to me about numerous times. How how do we, how do we help the investment into those properties? In other words, making them nicer, making them more aesthetic, more appealing for customers to go to. And that is occurring in the downtown area with a number of businesses that have gone down there. And then we got to drop down to the fourth bullet point. Plurality, plurality, thank you, Will, for putting that word in there. Christmas decorations. Again, city council took very specific action to fund Christmas decorations. And our Parks and Recreation team, along with the Chamber of Commerce, is developing a very robust Christmas and holiday decoration effort. It's not just going to be the city doing this, it is trying to gain support community wide to have a place in town. And it's going to start this year with our, what what is it called, Kevin, in December, Christmas?
Christmas in the Park.
Christmas in the Park. And we're going to be able to highlight the decorations that are out there, bring the community out, engage and allow them a place to actually see those decorations. Moving Chris Kendall Mart downtown last year was a really big improvement based on the attendees to that event. And they'll can, the chamber will continue that event downtown also. Sidewalks, you've approved grant funding to enhance a number of sidewalks. And just so you know, that process is still continuing. We just received last week an additional request to further refine those applications that you approved, which means we are still in the running for those grants. And I can tell you, a number of regional communities have already been notified, they are not being considered. So that speaks well of the projects that we submitted also. The walking and biking trails, if you have not been out to Ogletree Gap to do the hiking trails, and I know Dell has for sure because he's walked with the lady with the goat. And forgive me for not knowing your name, ma'am, I I know she's out there somewhere. But it's, we we have some really amazing hiking trails out at Ogletree Gap. Again, economy is is a big one and capitalizing on our Economic Development Corporation and the efforts that they're doing. And you as the governing body have the responsibility of guiding and directing them on what efforts they should move forward with and what they should should be doing. Because you appoint those board members, those board members then give policy direction to the executive director and the team that's over there. And then the the last one there is, I I just think it's it's a really positive noting that we are still an affordable community, and our military connection is clearly noted in that we are a safe and quiet community. And I think a lot of our residents actually appreciate that. And and I can tell you that I do in the decade plus that I've been here, so. The whole survey is something that we will have a focus on on November fourteenth. November fourteenth is your strategic planning retreat. And that's where we will be working on developing our next strategic plan, which are those very focused few items that we need to have a strong push and effort to accomplish. And so keep in mind, and I'd encourage you to study the survey again over the next couple of weeks as we lead into November fourteenth, so that we can be very prepared to develop that strategic plan. And in the next week, I will be asking counsel to do some homework, which is also in preparation for that retreat. So and and it's going to have, you'll have the ability to really focus on the survey and the responses that we received. So that as we go through that strategic planning process, you are also being responsive to our community that is reflected in this survey. And that's all I had to say, Mayor. Kevin, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Sure, I have just a few more comments, Ryan. First and foremost, the goat lady is Dana, and the goat is Goat Malone.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah. That's pretty good stuff. Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, I just wanted to thank the citizens that took the time to complete the survey, because it is, can be a little time consuming, ten to fifteen minutes to complete the survey. So thank you to those five hundred plus who took the initiative to do that, we're truly appreciative. I will. The presentation has previously been sent to y'all, and I'll work with IT this week, we'll get it uploaded on the website for the citizens to review. It'll be on the public relations page. And then lastly, I just want to thank Will for his professionalism and leadership. He's been amazing to work with. Personally, I've worked with Will for about twelve or thirteen years on surveys. And Will, I just want to say to you, thank you for your professionalism and your guidance getting through these surveys.
Thank you, Will. Anything else, Kevin?
My pleasure, you guys are great to work with.
You guys are great to work with.
Okay. Thank you, Will. You have a good evening.
All right.
Take care.
All right, if nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Then the regular meeting will begin at 6 o'clock. Good evening. Regular council meeting for the City of Coppers Cove held October 21st, 2025 is called to order at 6 o'clock PM. Please rise for the invocation by Councilperson Hart, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you could please bow with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings that you continue to give our community, our family, and our friends. Be with us today as we go through our decisions that we are making on behalf of our community. For those that are suffering, Father, we ask you just to be with them and heal them, Father. And also, I ask, we all ask for the continued cover and protection over our fire, our police, and our community as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join with the pledge of our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mary Ansee.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
John Hale.
Here.
Dale Tredway.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right, a quorum is present. We move to Item D, announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, early voting is occurring right now. And while Coppers Cove does not have ballot items on the ballot, to all of our voters, please go vote. Next is, this past Saturday, we held Eco Fest, excuse me, Eco Harvest out at Ogletree Gap. And I just want to say thank you to KCCV and Anna Rodriguez for putting on an amazing event. Well done. And then this Saturday, coming up on the, at 4:00 PM out at City Park, the Parks and Recreation Department is hosting the following festival. And want to make sure that people who are driving in that area around City Park, please be aware of the volume of traffic that will occur during this event, especially noting that there will be lots of children out there. Thank you.
Mr. Hale?
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hart?
Yes, the Friends of the Central Texas State Veterans Cemetery welcomes the public for their wreath preparation Saturday, November 22nd at 10:00 AM. The wreath laying ceremony Saturday, November 29th at 10:00 AM. And wreath retrieval Saturday, January 10th at 10:00 AM. If you need more information, please visit www.wreathsforvets.org. Thank you.
No announcements.
All right. We move to Item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to Section 551-042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or discussion about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right, is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum?
George McMaster, 11th and 1st Magnolia Avenue, I almost gave my apartment anyways. Ladies and gentlemen, I support the idea of a street maintenance fund. I supported it both when I first heard about it and when I emailed all of you about the illegality of the funds proposed exemptions. I have too much time on my hands anyways. $10 per residential account is equitable for the Ask of Residents, and with that, I have no complaints. However, the Ask of Local Businesses is inequable as currently proposed. The proposed formulas to determine a business account's fair share is, as charitably as I can put it, flawed. The business part of this fund, even with the maximum monetary cap, should not be implemented as currently proposed. Until a more equitable process is implemented for business accounts, I urge all of you to set a flat fee that is double the Ask of Residential Accounts. That may be 20 bucks a month per business account, but that's considerably more equitable for businesses than what we have on the table. Five years ago, yes, five years ago... coming immediately into effect. It took a couple of years before any equitable solution, and I do mean equitable solution in this context, was implemented. That act was a mistake. And that mistake, from beginning to end, was both inequitable and exceptionally cruel considering the circumstances. For the love of God, please do not barrel into an inequitable solution and then implement the fix well after the damage has already been done. If you go ahead with the business part of this fund as proposed without making it actually equitable, either temporarily, as I suggested, or permanently, when you implement the fix later, we will all pay for it one way or another.
Anyone else?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you again, you know? So you've been watching my videos and stuff like that, so I kind of came here to explain some. Mario Vasquez. So, first edition bookstore, and also created a new place called The Chamber. So, I've been making these videos lately, you know, and I got kicked out of Hot Topics because I reached about over 3,000 people trying to explain my views and why I believe the people, the citizens of Coppers Cove need to be protected as well. When I look at certain things, it's only one side. And when I look at the outcome of everything we're doing, it's going to raise property taxes. And that's coming ahead, right? We all know that. But what are we doing to protect the citizens that are on liens and who are suffering right now? So I kind of wrote this, you know? So I've been wondering lately how those living on financial dust and dignity will survive another rise in taxes. No cost of living adjustments for them, no raises, just the weight of a bond to fix a school they have already been probably given in the past. I wonder if the school sees the homes behind the faces, the ones held together by last meals. I wonder if they see the quiet sacrifices they have made. I wonder if the school board, the council, the mayor, the city manager know that some of those same children the school uses as a decoy come from places where having food in the pantry is just a prayer? And the mortgage is just a threat. Do they know that the same children the school claims to help, that some of those will suffer more? I ask and I wonder to myself, is this the answer? Is saying yes to every new fee, the city employers are getting raises, watching improving the new tax, we're watching someone fighting for their last ounce of food or even having a home to go to? And since I'm wondering, and I wonder who, who is protecting those Coppers Cove families? Who here among us believes in family first? And what about those who believe and were promised that the last bomb was the answer? And now they're made to feel guilt because they're not worthy? Why is this important to me? It's because I sat down and I saw the big picture. I saw devastation. I saw a quiet list of names that will soon be added to a budget of despair. I wonder if you know that those citizens you're asking to support, all your fees, taxes and bonds are tired and they had enough? There are parents of graduates who are made to feel guilty. There are families of this town that have given all. And now they're told they haven't done enough. No thank yous, just guilt. Just give us more. So I wonder why, and I wonder who, and I wonder who here has stepped up to those families? I want to know who the ones are going to pay and made to be feel guilty, which is not good, you know? But it's okay. I think sometimes that you don't understand what they're going through. So you go home, they're not your parents, they're not your families, you'll sleep well at night. But yet, I know thousands and hundreds of people, I mean, hundreds of people who are suffering, trying to last with their last meal. So what I've been trying to do on social media, I have been trying to open the doors to tell you that there's two sides of everything. And when Hot Topics kicked me out, I said, well, okay. It's because my message is reaching out thousands. I am only here to find out what we're going to do for those people who are about to suffer, and that's not a crime. That is try and find a solution. And I had broken down your budgets. I went all the way down to 2021. I went to 2016, and I see where the trouble is. I know everything that's happening. I know you guys have a hard job. I know everything that's coming across, but there are solutions, and I offer some of them, and I hope you guys return my, the proposals I put in. At least say something to me, you know? But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak during citizens forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to talk to you tonight about where Coppers Cove is headed.
Please, please state your name for the record.
Excuse me, Jafrida Jared. I want to talk to you tonight about where Coppers Cove is headed, not just in maintenance, but in meaningful progress. Our city has the people, the potential, and the heart to thrive, but we must be intentional about how we grow. I heard comments suggesting that having better roads will attract businesses. With all due respect, I think that's a short sighted view. Infrastructure is essential, but companies don't relocate because of smooth payment. They come for opportunity, a skilled workforce, access to logistics, reliable utilities, and leadership that demonstrates fiscal responsibility and long-term vision. What's the, if applying the maintenance, the street fee to businesses costs losing small businesses, but brings us better roads, what's really the cost? Roads are the foundation, not the strategy. Applying a street fee to 14% of residents who are elderly and 9.3% of your residents who are considered impoverished, I believe lacks consideration for those in the community as well as the businesses. I heard in the last council meeting that it was noted that most businesses, small businesses, fell within the first year. I think this would be contributory to that. When given the opportunity to reduce the maintenance fee for residents to eight, you opposed. I respectfully ask you to reconsider. Right now, Coppers Cove has an abundance of retail, small shops, restaurants and service businesses, but very little true industry that breeds growth. Retail follows people. It doesn't create prosperity. If we want to build a stronger economy, we must attract employers that provide sustainable living wages and long-term career paths. When residents can live and work here, it strengthens our tax base, supports our schools, and elevates the overall quality of life. It's time to move from maintenance to momentum, to make decisions that build opportunity, not just optics. Coppers Cove deserves progress that pays forward. Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon, or evening, Mayor, Ryan, council. My name is Ray Payne, 604 North 17th Street. I don't have a prepared message as some of these other people do. George said he had a little bit of time on his hands. I don't have as much time, but I do feel that it's important to come up here and speak about this city maintenance fee. The $10 fee for residential, I don't have a problem with. The $20 non-residential fee, I don't have a problem with. The part that starts to get fuzzy for me is the formulas that were used in order to create the proposal for the, for the businesses. These businesses are owned by people who live in residential property. Yeah, they're going to have a $10 increase, but then they have to go to work and they're going to have to pay that increase on their, their property. Some of those people use that money to pay their, their own home bills, and they're pinching pennies right now, and then we just increased their fees by hundreds, hundreds of dollars, if not thousands. This, I understand you guys have an impossible task of trying to repair every road that's on this schedule from the green to the yellow to the red. But trying to come up with the entire fund for that from the tax base that we have, from the, from the community base that we have, is an equally impossible task at the, at the rate that you're trying to get it from. I, I understand that we're, we're trying to just kind of muscle through it and get that, the amount of money that we need in order to make that. But the, the base that you, that you have to pull from is already squeezed tough enough. We've got a bond coming up that we're trying to get through because the kids deserve that. And that's going to increase, like I said, on average, $250 a year. We've got property tax increases coming for that. And to throw this in there, as far as the non-residential, at the rate that it's at is absolutely too much at this, at this point in time. I think what we should do moving forward is do a, a lower rate, try to start with what we have and repair the roads that we can, they're in the red, and reassess in a couple of years to see what we can absorb at that point. Having exemptions for different places is only going to exacerbate the problem on the people that are, that don't have exemptions. We're going to be squeezing that rock as much as we can because the other people who have the exemptions are, I'm not saying they're scot-free, but they're not, they're not contributing to their effect as well. The, the problem that we have is that the damage to the roads right now is so large that we just simply can't absorb that at our base. I, I would love to say, let's go ahead and repair the roads, but we're, we're going to adjust. If there's roads out there that absolutely need it and you just cannot drive on them, repair those. Let's get the money that we're going to come in, that's going to come in from that revenue and repair those. And the ones that we can drive around and deal with, we'll deal with it. I know you're going to get calls from people saying, hey, I've got a pothole on my road, and they're going to keep calling and calling. But I'm going to have to ask you to just kind of soak that in and just say, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do right now unless you are the person that wants to repair that pothole by increasing this non-residential avenue up to an unsustainable amount. So please consider that as we try to move forward and get these roads repaired without putting the burden on these local small business owners who are just trying to make it by and do the best that they can in this community. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Crystal Owens, 1303 Elke Circle. I just want to say I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Payne's statement. And as a business owner and a community member, this is my hometown. I'm proud to live here. I've chosen to live here and raise my family here. However, being in the third year of my business, I am looking out to see what's going on with this. And if the fee is implemented as proposed towards small businesses, I will take my business elsewhere. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak during citizens forum?
Hello, Michael Tratt, 406 Meyer Lou Avenue. I realize that there is a necessity to maintain the roads, and you guys are trying to find a way to do it. I understand that. What I have in opposition with is two of the exemptions that you're proposing. Primarily, I'm opposed to it because when a citizen expressed their thought about a person that doesn't use the roads, a residential person, response back was that person gets benefit from the roads. Whether they're door dashing things, people are coming to their houses for medical assistance, whatever. The same applies for two of these exemptions, the businesses that you want exempt for two years and the nonprofits. Some of our nonprofits have paved spaces for parking and things that is one of your criteria toward figuring out, you know, these fees. A lot of these things have parking lots bigger than, say, like Homebase. So they're going to generate a lot of traffic. They benefit from the traffic. They benefit from the roads. They should have to have the fees applied just like anybody else, businesses, new businesses. I understand you're trying to attract it, but if a business cannot sustain themselves for, with the fee for two years, they're not going to sustain it at all. So if, if you're going to apply it across the board to the citizens equally because they're getting access to roads, should be for everybody else, the non-residential as well. Thank you.
All right, anyone else to speak during citizens forum? Anyone to speak during citizens forum? All right, we will close citizens forum. We will move to item F consent agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. F1, consideration and action on approval of city council's workshop meeting minutes for October 7th, 2025. Lisa Wilson, city secretary. F2, consideration and action on approval for, of city council regular meeting minutes for October 7th, 2025. Lisa Wilson, city secretary. F3, consideration and action authorizing the city manager to execute acceptance of a utility easement agreement by CD DG Coppers Cove 116 LLC to facilitate the development of a 10,640 square foot retail building for the Dollar General DG Market located at 1548 South FM 116, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Service Director. F4, consideration and action authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with RJN Group to complete the 2025 wastewater treatment plant modeling and master plan project. Scott Osborne, Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works.
All right, council, is there any item you wish to pull and consider separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve items F1 through F4.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've moved to item G, public hearings.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. G1, second public hearing and consideration to approve ordinance number 2025-34 for annexation of the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project requested by the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation. Anne James W. Clark II and Wesley Atkinson, consisting of 112.38 acres of land situated in the Richard Hallmark Survey, abstract 466, the William, the William Hayden Survey, abstract 454, the CG Bennett Survey, abstract 1680, and the James A. Wells Survey, abstract 1065, and a portion of the US Highway 190 located southwest of Old Coppers Cove Road and Mashburn Drive in the extra territorial jurisdiction of the city of Coppers Cove, Corial County, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Service Director.
The time is 6:23. We'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, on October 7th, 2025, the city council held the first of two public hearings to receive comments from the public on the annexation of the Mashburn Drive annexation project. This second public hearing is required by the Texas Local Government Code to receive comments regarding the annexation. City council is required to open the second public hearing, receive any public comments. After the closing of the second public hearing, city council action can be taken to approve the annexation. With that, staff recommends city council approve ordinance number 2025-34 as requested.
All right, is there anyone to speak during the public hearing?
George McMaster, 1101 Magnolia Avenue. The answer is yes, I do support it. I mean, it makes sense to me, so I do support it.
All right, anyone else to speak during the public, this public hearing? All right, the time is 6:24. We will close the public hearing. This is the second public hearing, so there's action to be taken on this item. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-34. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
We move to item H, action items.
H1, consideration and action on appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill the alternate one position. Bobby Lewis, Development Service Director.
Mayor, Council, in an effort to obtain qualified applicants, a vacancy announcement was released to the media, and staff received one application from Robert Charles Martin for appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill a vacancy for alternate one position. Staff recommend City Council review the application submitted for appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill the vacancy for alternate one position.
All right, Council, any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Do we need to do a nomination for this?
Only if there's more than one.
More than one, okay. So there is one applicant for one position, Robert C. Martin. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to appoint Robert Martin to the Board of Adjustment to fill the vacancy for the alternate position number one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Ms. Hogan?
Yeah.
Ms. Grofus? Okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to item H2.
Consideration in action on approving ordinance number 2025-35, adding Chapter 11, Article 6, Street Maintenance Utility System to the City of Coppers Cove Code of Ordinance, establishing a street maintenance utility system and related fees. Scott Osborne, Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Haverlaw. All right, let me quickly pull up. All right, so appreciate your time tonight. As you're all familiar, we've been talking about the creation of a street maintenance utility and establishing a fee to effectively maintain the city's street network for the last five to six years. Mr. Haverlaw was gracious enough to put together the background that you see in the City Council workup. The last time we met, a couple of weeks back, City Council considered five distinct questions, which are provided in that background information. And really what that came down to was, first of all, should we continue with the consideration of implementation of the street maintenance fee? If so, should the residential rate remain at $10 a month? Should we move in and establish the non-residential rates at an amount of 21% of what was originally proposed? And should there be exemptions for various entities throughout the city, including the ISD, nonprofits, new businesses, things of that nature? And finally, should there be a time period installed in the ordinance of three years before any consideration for any rate increases are considered for this, along with an annual accounting requirement relating to the benefits in the activities of this street maintenance utility? What you see tonight, and we've included a draft revised ordinance in your packet, that basically effectuates every single one of these pieces of direction that City Council has given, and that's up for your discussion and consideration tonight. With that specifically to the direction received on the non-residential aspect of the fee, the original direction from Council was to establish a cap of 2,500 and then base the rest on the trip generation factors as determined by the city's street payment condition assessment. After we went through the public engagement campaign and throughout that, we've heard numerous concerns from the community. You heard some concerns tonight about those amounts being too high and potentially having a very adverse effect, especially on the smaller businesses. We've also heard about equitability amongst non-residential versus residential and non-residential amongst non-residential as originally proposed. So let me pull up this document, give you kind of a snapshot, and I apologize, this is a little small, but I should be able to. Here we go. So as we discussed last time, we had the original fees that ranged anywhere from the minimum of $20 up to a cap of $2,500. With that, based on City Council's direction, the trip impacts have been modified in this, in the results of that. These will be the bands that you're seeing proposed in the new ordinance revisions. And as you can see, the first three bands are set at the $20 minimum rate. It goes up from there to 2,678, 4,195, and 7,144. Then it goes to 1,3104, 184, 254, and the ultimate, right before the 11th band, would be at the 390 amount. So for example, if you look at the number, these are the number of businesses over here on the left. So as you can see, in these first six bands, this is about, represents about 70 to 80% of your businesses throughout the community, and then it spreads out from there for a grand total of 459. This model is still under revision based on the direction received from Council. However, you were also provided, most recently, a copy of what this means for every business that we currently have in this model, what their rates would be. And as you can see, these are significantly different than what was originally proposed through this. But with that, obviously, there's a corresponding decrease in potential revenue that we discussed last time. That brings the potential revenue down from about approximately $3 million down to approximately 1.67 million. As we've discussed before, based on the original payment condition assessment, to actually start gaining ground in terms of street maintenance, the city would have to provide approximately 4.6 million in $21, $22 to actually start increasing that overall payment condition index across the network as a whole. With this amount, 1.6, as I stated last time, although that's not the 4.6, it would be a start to actually slow that decline, and City Council could consider other potential options that we've discussed at length in the past. With this, I would like to open it up to City Council's discussion and address any specific questions you may have about the revisions that were made, but they do reflect exactly what that direction was at the last council meeting, which is what you see tonight before you for consideration in action. Council, any questions for Mr. Osborne?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions. First, I'll just go to the, I'll just ask about, like, for the daycares. I don't know exactly how many is here in town, but looking at the current price, how did we come about with the formula? Because I know some are smaller than others, but they have more people, more kids.
Mm-hmm.
And then some of the larger ones might have a larger building, they're paying more. So that just don't make sense to me.
Right, and all of the calculations are based on the payment condition assessment from the trip generation rates prepared by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, as we've discussed. With the daycare, it is based on a square footage analysis. So the larger the space, the larger the business, the larger the impact under these surveys, which calculates into basically what that amount is. At City Council's direction last time, however, in addition to this reduction down to approximately about 21% of what the original proposal was, with daycare specifically, we did factor in bypass rates, and we talked about those last time, which further reduced the impact on that segment of the non-residential community, based on the, really, the actual impact, if you will, of a daycare, based on the way we utilize daycares. You drive there, you drop off your children, you go to work, you come back, you pick up your children. So it's considered in large part a bypass, a trip that shouldn't be counted for these purposes. So those were factored in for those daycares and various other segments of the non-residential community, based on our discussion and direction last time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So when you say bypass rates, you're talking about a number of stops in one trip? Right, the cleanest example would be you're heading to work, you stop by the daycare, drop off your child, go on to work. That's one trip rather than multiple trips when you factor in that bypass rate. Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understood that. Okay, any other comments or questions for Mr. Osborne? Okay, Council, is there action to be taken on this item?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get my thing. I do have something to say. If I could, please, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Okay. I'm just going to make this very brief with my position in regards to what's currently, what we have currently proposed. I want to thank everyone who was involved, first of all, the city, the subcommittee, thank you, Rita, and all those that were involved with doing this, because this was directed by City Council. And the traffic and the study was something that was an option of what we were going to do. It wasn't supposed to be this, like, we're definitely going to do this, but it gave us an idea of what it would look like. And I'm thankful for the town hall meetings that gave us a lot of information and concerns from our residents. And I really looked at all of those comments, wrote them down when I was there. And one of those comments was, is it, are these numbers reflective of our community? I know that they are not in regards to when we look at the trips, number of trips. So because of that, I still stand firm with the opposition to it, and I do still say, I believe that $10 for residents, we can maybe go down to eight, that could be something that would be discussed. And for not, for commercial, for 20. That would be where I stand. And this can still be a conversation if the Council would like to. If not, I just wanted to say that. Thank you all. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would also like to reconsider the two free years for new businesses on this ordinance, because I don't think it's fair to the businesses that are here. And businesses that are wanting to move to town, that's great, but we should look at that on an individual case, on what they're going to bring to town, too. And they can start with EDC, just like they do for any other incentives for that benefit.
I can support that. I can support that.
Make a motion and?
I know we have to wait for that. Yeah, okay. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Don't be timid, people.
Make a motion on this with modifications?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-35, adding Chapter 11, Article 6, Street Maintenance Utility System to the City of Coppers Cove Code of Ordinances, establishing a street maintenance utility system and related fees with modifications on the two-year exemption of businesses beyond a case-by-case basis.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Alzona. Did you have something?
Just a clarifying question to the motion. The motion was a modification to the new business exemption. You mean remove the new business exemption. Is that exactly what you mean?
I think you said.
No, it would be, it would be on a case-by-case basis. So it wouldn't be a removal. It would be a review of each new business as to, like Jack said, based on what they bring to the city.
So if I may make a recommendation regarding the motion for the ordinance, for execution of the ordinance, the language is vague and highly subjective. And if you want to go with Mr. Smith's recommendation, they can work through the Economic Development Corporation in terms of possible incentives, which could help cover the cost or recover the cost of that fee through that process. And removal of the exemption will make it cleaner in terms of executing the ordinance and put the full emphasis in coordination with the Economic Development Corporation.
All right, so how do you want to see that worded?
Removal or striking of the exemption for new businesses.
I agree with that.
You can give policy direction as a result after that, but in terms of the ordinance itself. Mr. Osborne, did you have any other recommendation on that?
The alternative to actually striking it cleanly, the issue or the concern I have from a application standpoint, a case-by-case basis is just that typically when you draft an ordinance, you don't provide much discretion for the staff that actually implements it unless that discretion is very limited to the metrics you provide. For example, in this case, would there be a threshold of the number of employees that come to town? Would there be a threshold of the amount of capital contribution that this business made? Things of that nature that would allow city staff to not play favorites and execute what you're asking us to do. Otherwise, it becomes, it's really open for arguments that city staff is playing favors, and that's not a position we should be in. So back to the original resolution, you want to strike?
The original motion needs to be modified to strike the two-year exemption for new businesses.
Correct. Correct. And you seconded that? Okay. Discussion?
I have discussion in regards to some of the comments that were made today in regards to the school district and the nonprofits being exempted. Is there anything, anyone who is for this wanting to speak more on that and have any response into the community effort, pretty much the community, who are all involved in this whole process right now of what's happening? And so from what I'm, what I was hearing was, since it's a community effort, all the community should be involved. So I was just wondering if, for those that were for this, is that going to be considered? Or did you still want it to keep that exempt?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Members of City Council is for this, and therefore the city, the school district, and for the nonprofits to be exempted. We've had comments here today that basically had said, it's a community effort and all of the communities involved, so the community should all be part of this. So I'm wondering right now, for those who are for this, are they considering that part of what was brought up today?
I think the fact that we had...
I think the fact that we had four or five town halls.
Seven.
Seven, total. And what came out of those town halls was this, these provisions as far as tax exempt, school sys- uh, ISD, uh, all of those things kinda declared itself at that point in time. Everybody had a, had a, uh, opportunity to comment about that, and that's why this got revised to the, uh, uh, ordinance as it's written, uh, through that input that was provided through those town halls. So it's kinda like taking those town halls and disregarding it and just saying, okay, we're talking about tonight, and should we rethink that? Instead of going through the, the process that we went through to, to invite all, everybody from a public standpoint to im- give their input in these town halls. And I, and you were in many of them, and so most of these were implemented because of those, uh, those sessions.
Are we talking, what, what, what are we talking about with, when we say many of those were implemented? Are we talking just about the nonprofit exemptions and the community, uh, the schools, the school system exemptions?
So I know originally, when we discussed this, there were no exemptions for anyone.
Yes.
And the people spoke about that in a way that they felt that if we implemented this fee on the, the school districts and the counties and the nonprofits, it would drive up costs in other areas, it would increase taxes by the school district, that was the concern. That's why we implemented these changes in the last meeting. That's why this line, um, eleven dash two twenty-seven was put in place.
Yes, and I understand that, and I'm thinking of the, what we've heard today in regards to, um, pretty much it being a community effort, and this is how you're putting it into place now, but have the consideration of the ten-twenty will keep things so, very low, where then we wouldn't have to have that. Go ahead.
Okay, so we also heard from people that they want this equitable.
Yes.
Equitable means that this fee applied equally across the residents and the businesses to get to a point where we have enough funds to actually fix the roads rather than just maintain the status quo, that the fees are gonna be sixty-five or seventy dollars per family, per business. Is that what we wanna do?
What I would...
Because they, they have said equitable, I didn't say equitable.
Sure. I guess my focus is keeping it very, very low, because I just truly believe, just how we're living today, there's going to be more fees to come, and I'm trying to keep this very low, and I'm trying to put everybody in, in, in the community to be a part of the solution, and that's why I stand firmly with the ten-twenty. So that's why I'm asked, when I asked, there were some valid point, uh, concerns and statements that we've heard today, to maybe see about the ten-twenty, even though we're here talking about the ordinance, we still have a chance in order to, um, make changes if we want to, and that's all I wanted, just to bring up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I support a utility maintenance fee, I just don't support it in its current form, okay? Then ten and twenty, it's a drop in the bucket to get started. Is it a lot of money to start on the roads? No, it's, it's bare minimum, and I understand that. But with all the laws, and unfounded mandates that are coming from Austin, it's affecting the counties and local communities. And, and like council member Hart said, there's gonna be other fees coming down the road. I see that, because of the, the way we're going right now, with again, with the items that are coming out in Austin, we're gonna have to come back to the well and ask for more money from citizens in other areas, and I just, I know we're gonna have to ask here and there for the different things. I just, to me, I just wanna be fair, I'm more comfortable start with the ten and twenty, and then a few years, come back and relook at it, and if we need to go up, we can go up, because like I said before, we're growing, and we're gonna have to go back to the well and ask for more money in the future.
Okay. All right, so there is a motion and a second.
With modifications?
With, with the striking of the, uh, two-year business exemption. So we need to vote on that, if there's anything else to come up later, then, that'll have to be looked at. All right? Everybody clear as mud? Right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Okay, roll call.
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Dale Treadway?
Nay.
Vanya Hart?
Nay.
Jack Smith?
Nay.
Uh, three to four?
The vote carries. The vote carries. All right, the motion's carried, we move to item H-three.
Consideration and action on ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-six, amending the sea, the city's fee schedule. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Ashley. Good afternoon, council, mayor, uh, city manager. Uh, this is a final step, uh, on the process of implementing the street maintenance fee. And for the proposal is that we add to city's fee schedule, uh, the street maintenance fee as discussed in, and approved by council in the previous item. Uh, that fee will be effective January first, twenty-twenty-six, so staff's recommendation is that we approve the attached ordinance amending the city's fee schedule.
All right. Council questions for Arianna?
Well, we need to modify the fee schedule to reflect the fact that we will not be, um, using the two-year exemption on new businesses.
Well, it does reference the chapter eleven that you just approved, so...
So, so the answer is no, uh, the fee schedule just adopts the single-family equivalent, and then the ordinance actually includes all of the calculations and the exemptions.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is there a motion on this to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-six, amending the city's fee schedule.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Alzona, seconded by Mr. Hale. Discussion?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With, uh, change to the fees, that's, I'm just making sure I'm correct, the ten dollars for residential and then whatever the price would be for the business, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Roll call.
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Dale Treadway?
Nay.
Vanya Hart?
Nay.
Jack Smith?
Nay.
Three to four, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
The, uh, item H-three, the motion carries. We move to item H-four.
Consideration and action to authorize the city manager to complete the purchase process of the installation of poles and netting for the Hills of Cove Golf Course Driving Range. Jeff Stoddard, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Ashley. Evening, mayor, council, city manager. Uh, part of the capital improvement projects that was approved by city council included one project for the replacement of the driving range net and poles at the Hills of Cove Golf Course. Staff sought out quotes, uh, from buyboard vendors, uh, receiving two, two, two quotes, uh, one from Sports Netting Systems LLC in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and eleven cents, and one from TR Facility Services LLC in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Um, both quotes include the removal of the existing netting and supporting poles and installation of new metal poles and netting. City staff recommended city council authorize the city manager to complete the purchase process for the replacement of the driving range poles and netting for the Hills of Cove Golf Course with Sports Netting Systems LLC in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and eleven cents.
Council, any questions for Mr. Stoddard?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jeff, I apologize, I meant to ask you this earlier, but do they have to remove the poles as well?
So the, the poles, uh, the three of them have already been replaced because of the, the, the windstorm in twenty-nineteen. I think, uh, Mr. Keller was the interim director at that time. The poles are, uh, degrading at the base, so, um, to spend that kinda money to replace the netting and not address the poles, we could cause more damage to the netting, which would basically be throwing money away.
Yeah, I think the netting was gonna be raised also.
Correct, we're gonna go to fifty-five feet on the back end and forty-five feet on the sides.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to complete the purchase process for the replacement of the driving range poles and netting, netting for the Hills of Cove, for the Hills of Cove Golf Course with Sports Netting Systems LLC in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and eleven cents.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, we move to item H-five.
Consideration and action on approving resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC's application to change rates within the city should be denied, and that the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company. Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Mayor and council, you have previously taken action on this to suspend the rate case that Encore submitted. Uh, that time period has ended, we've evaluated the rate case in more detail, uh, with our coalition. Uh, the overall inconsistent recommendation is to deny the rate case that Encore has submitted. Just as a reminder, uh, the rate case that was submitted will increase residential rates by twelve-point-three percent, and, uh, street, uh, lighting rates by fifty-one percent. I believe the, uh, commercial rates would also increase, but it would be in a single-digit percentage increase. And so, uh, by you taking action to deny Encore's rate increase request, it will then go to the Public Utility Commission at the state of Texas, in which, uh, the PUC will evaluate the rate case request. We will be a participant through our coalition in that rate, rate case request, and see if we can, uh, either further reduce or stop the rate case, uh, as requested. Staff's recommendation is approval of the resolution, denying, or, yeah, denying the, uh, rate case as submitted.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Haverlaw? All right, motion ought to be made on this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC application to change rates within the city should be denied, and that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Strophas, seconded by Ms. Hogan. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. That is all of the action items, there's no reports from staff and outside entities. Item J, items for future agendas.
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing from me, sir.
None, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I have none, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
None.
Did you say nothing? None, okay. Thought you were saying nothing, honey? Okay. All right, there is no executive session, so the time is seven o'clock, we stand adjourned.